Yes, it is. Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll get started. A call to order the Village Board of Oregon for Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025. I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Higgins?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Knipfer?
Here.
Marks? McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Van Campen?
Here. Thank you. Item three, approval of August 18th, 2025, Village Board meeting minutes if correct and correction of mistakes, if any, staff recommendation motion to approve. Tom and Paige, questions, corrections? Hearing none. Motion by Tom, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Items for discussion and/or possible action. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. Anyone here for public comments? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Item five, approval of electricity in the amount of $872,837.79. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Amanda and Tim, questions, comments?
I have one question.
Tom?
Bottom of page 13. Most of the items you read, you can figure out what they are. I just can't figure out what it is. It's mid-state equipment. That's the very last item on page 13. Transportation equipment. Is that for equipment purchases? Is it moving equipment? Is it?
That's a great question. So that is actually for a mower for our water utility for those facilities. The accounting required by the Wisconsin Public Service Commission is extremely opaque. And from everything we could gather, they wanted us to classify something that literally transports someone, including a mower, as a piece of transportation equipment. So that's what that is.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, this is a roll call. Motion by Amanda, second by Tom. Uh, Tim?
Peterson?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Knipfer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda, staff recommendation, motion to approve. It's items A, six A through six C. Paige and Tim have made the motion. Questions? Amanda?
Was this, uh... Oh, you know what? Wrong item. Never mind. I don't have any questions. We're good.
Never mind, it's good.
I was gonna say something. I just thought it was earlier.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, motion by Paige, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, reports from committees, a park board, resolution number 25-27, amending appendix I of the 2025 annual fee schedule to update park shelter reservation fees. Park board and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tim?
Well, did you want to add something to? I think it was quite detailed information in the packet.
Have you answered any questions?
Yeah. Go ahead. Oh, Tim?
I would just comment that we should look for ways to market this to residents of the neighboring cities and tell them our parks are nicer than yours and the fees are cheaper. So have your parties here in Oregon.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say thank you for this. This is what I was... I thought this was part of the consent agenda and it's not, so that's where I got confused. But thank you for doing this to whoever's on the park board. That was a good thing. It's something, and I'm just gonna say this as kind of a life lesson, particularly for newer board members. This idea of increasing those rates is something I brought to the park board, like before any of you were on the board. And way back when, when I was on the park board, because I felt like we didn't charge anything at the time. And we were losing money on it. And so I, like, did a lot of homework on this. And I, like, found the data and I made big spreadsheets. And I said, this is how much our parks are used and this is why it's important. And there just was not an appetite at the time. The park board did just, they didn't want to take action on it or they just were very reluctant at the time. And now it's happening, which makes me so, so happy. But the lesson here is patience. Timing is everything. People have great ideas all the time, but they just don't always happen as quickly as we'd like them to. So I'm very, very excited to see this. I feel some validation. I'm not taking credit for the idea. I'm just saying, this isn't the point of this. I just want to make it clear, because I'm sure other people had this idea too, but I'm... The point was just that things happen in time. There's a pace to government. It's not fast. But it happens. So yay. That was my point.
Great. That makes me happy. Tom?
So I guess I was surprised that, are these the only parks that have to have a reservation fee as far as shelters? There are, there's many shelters in some of the other parks.
So there are, these are our most used shelters. And just to clarify, Amanda, we have had fees for the last several years for the shelters. We're just increasing them. These are our most, again, used and they have kind of the highest amenities. So restrooms, you know, water fountains, all those things. Those are typically the ones that we see the reservations for parties and things. And especially as they've become more popular and people have found out that we have really great parks and facilities, sometimes we actually have events, two in a day, where it might be a morning party and afternoon party. And so that requires public works to come out in the middle of a weekend day potentially to flip trash cans, you know, empty those, get tables rearranged, things like that. So want to make sure we're covering our costs for that time. But yeah, there are a handful of other ones. Gazner, Bethel Greenacre have very minimal fees, but they're not typically reserved very often.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, motion by Amanda, second by Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven B, Library Board, review year one energy benchmarking services and phase two solar pre-design analysis. Consider solar expansion projects at Oregon Public Library, including the allocation of funds. Library Board and staff recommendation, motion to place $135,000 of Inflation Reduction Act funds for proposed project and draft 2026 budget. Motion by Tim, second by Tom. Discussion. Well, did you want to add anything, Jennifer?
I'm happy to answer any questions or explain anything further, but I don't need to talk at you if you've read the memo.
There's a lot of detailed information in the packet, that's for sure.
Yeah, it just looks like the program has been slightly better than anticipated and we're gonna expand it. Fair summary?
I think it's, yeah, slightly better than expected. We had hoped to include more originally and we weren't able to at that time. But we planned for the future so that we could add that when the time was right. And with that inflation reduction act funding that we were able to get off of the investment the board made on solar and geothermal in the library, those funds are available, we hope, to be able to put towards expanding that further.
That's great.
Okay. Anybody else? Motion by Tim, second by Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven C, Sustainability Committee, lease amendment with Oregon Youth Center for property at 110 North Oak Street for the addition of a rain garden. We've talked to this, talked to this, talked about this already. I don't know if there's anything else to add.
So this is just the actual amendment to our lease agreement with the youth center that would allow for the installation of the proposed rain garden.
Go ahead.
I will just add, because it's part of this, that we have a tentative installation date of Tuesday, September 16th. I think that's a Tuesday? At 3:30, is that a Tuesday?
Yep.
At 3:30, we still need plan commission final approval, so it's still tentative. But if anyone's interested in coming and helping plant some, uh, plant a rain garden, we'll be there. And huge thanks to the public works staff that has already been helping us a little bit dig out some of the top lawn area. They haven't done it yet, because again, we're waiting on final approval. But they're willing to help us. And so hopefully this will be done by the end of September.
Okay. And then get a motion. Let's do that. Tim and Paige. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, unfinished business, item for discussion and/or possible action A. Ordinance number 2509, amending section 3.11 of the Village of Ordinance Code of Ordinances relating to the library, park improvement, and parkland acquisition fees. And I will now open the public hearing. Are there any additional staff comments beyond what's in the packet? Nope. Okay. Are there any public comments? No public comments. I will close the public hearing and will move to item two. Village Board discussion, a possible action on ordinance, staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Tom and Amanda, questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eight B, ordinance number 25-10, amending section 18.05 sub two of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances relating to the fee in lieu of dedication. I will open the public hearing, ask staff if they have any additional comments. Hearing none. And I would ask for public comments. Seeing none. I will close the public hearing. Let's see. Two, Village Board discussion, possible action. Plan commission and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tim, discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. H C, review draft 2026 through 2035 capital improvement plan.
All right. I don't have too much this evening, so I think this is our fourth meeting reviewing the CIP. There was just a couple of things from the last meeting to address for, I guess this is our last full review meeting. We're hoping to have it approved at the next Village Board meeting. But really, the last thing we wanted to try to do was solve for that, meeting our 75% debt limit that we have, a self-imposed policy. And really, the last kind of piece of the puzzle to kind of move around was the fire station project and what the scope of that might be and where it might land in our 10-year plan. So trying to think about a, I guess, worst-case scenario, maybe the largest version of a potential project, approaching almost $30 million all-in, is what I worked with in this, in this version. And in order to make that work and try to meet our policies, we're looking at, towards the end of this 10-year horizon. So looking at the project in 2034, 2035 for construction. So, and then a couple of lead-up years of design and maybe property acquisition, that sort of thing. So that was what solved it at the end of, is moving that project out about that far. Obviously, if the project is smaller or not as expensive as maybe an all-in project would be, that project could maybe move up earlier, maybe towards the 2030, 2031 range. But this last version here puts it out to about 2035. And so our debt limit peaks at about 74% in 2035. And then our property tax impact about doubles over the 10-year period. And then the last kind of minor thing in there was just updating the new median value home, which went from $420,000 to $539,000. So just so if those numbers look different to you, that's what happened there. So at this point, all the projects are what they are and what we've talked about. And we have an analysis that shows we're within our policy.
Okay, we're nearing the end of the process for this. So comments on Martin's edits to date? Changes? All right. No actions recorded tonight. And moving on. Let's see. Eight D, review Village Administrator's 2026 operating budget assessment. As usual, I have a terrific, detailed memo. I'm sure Martin wants to comment on it.
Well, I guess I could talk about it as much as you'd like. I mean, if there's, if you want me to go through the whole thing, I can, I'm happy to do that. Otherwise, if there's things that we want to key in on or if there's just things, questions that you have, we can certainly do that. I'm open to direction on how to provide you what you need to know or want to know. I guess what I would say is, for tonight, we're not really looking for any particular action. Just to know that we're going in the right direction. Obviously, if you, if the board feels strongly about some things or all things or one or this, that sort of thing, then let us know and then we won't keep going down that pathway. But getting happy to go through it all or just a little bit or ask, answer questions.
Okay, you want the trustees, the detail or the clip notes? Or do you feel like you've got what you need from the memo? Tom?
I guess I was especially attentive to the retention of staff that was given in this document, especially in relationship to the police department and the management non-union, the foreign non-union staff. I think that we have a great staff and personnel all through it. A lot of the positions they're asking for, like HR takes pressure off of other people so they can continue their jobs and improve it. And I guess that we're trying to make good working conditions and yet provide great services. And I think we are going in a great direction here, so.
Okay. Tim?
I would like to know more about the property maintenance and code enforcement idea of outsourcing that. I was really intrigued by some of the comments on committees. I definitely support the study regarding the police. And development was another area that I was, commercial development, I was another area I'm interested in. At least, did you want to talk about outsourcing?
So this part of my job, sort of the zoning enforcement piece, has definitely, especially this time of year, can take a lot of time. There's a lot of overgrown grasses and properties that are not kept up. Other, you know, vehicles and yards and other things like that that need to be addressed. Often, some of those situations are property owners that don't live in the area. There's other things going on in their lives because they, and maybe property maintenance is in the top of their to-do list because of life situations. So they can take a lot of time to kind of work through with people. We are trying to establish an agreement with a property maintenance landscaping company that people get a warning letter. This is, you know, you're violating our noxious weed ordinance, which limits grasses to 12 inches in height. And then you need to have a cut by next day, otherwise we're gonna be sending out a company and it's already in our fee schedule that we can charge folks for that cost and bill them. Or if they don't pay, then it can get assessed to property taxes. So that's something that, in the process of trying to establish. This is a little bit, I guess, of a policy decision for you all, how proactive we want to be with some property maintenance. I think different communities, of course, do it differently. If it's a high priority, there's actually somebody who's out, maybe on a weekly, bi-weekly basis, driving around the village, taking photos. Right now, we're really a complaint-driven. There's just so many properties. Often, there's things going on, you know, in backyards that are just difficult to see. And again, I don't have time to be driving around and looking for those properties. And usually, the neighbors or neighborhood associations or something, they're making us aware of it. But by that point, it's already been going on for a while. So one kind of policy question is how aggressive and proactive do you want to be with trying to be aware of these situations? Sort of nip them in the bud before they get hopefully out of control. And then the other kind of piece is just regardless of proactive versus reactive approach, they need to be followed up on. And letters go out, you know, confirm, did they actually mow or not? You know, who are we, what's that list look like to send the mowing company out to get that mown? And then, you know, billing folks and kind of doing it again the next month or whatever. And usually, it's this growing season, kind of May to October-ish, that it's more of a... Especially this year, I think it's been, you know, a big, something we're hearing, hearing from a lot. And just with everything else that's on my plate, it's difficult to kind of get to in a timely fashion and then follow up with folks. So there are different companies that do this, that you can hire to do the code enforcement. And they, I'm sure, can do a range of options as far as how much are they actually out there on the streets? Are you just forwarding information to them? They're doing the follow-up. They're sending the letters. So I think it can be as little or as much as we wanted. And then we could take a look at our fee schedule right now. For the mowing specifically, it's a minimum of $200 an hour. Sorry, minimum of $200 at $200 an hour. So a minimum of an hour charged, depending on, of course, if it's larger lawn, it could be more. So some of those fees, we could, again, take a look at if that's an appropriate amount. And we want it to be enough an amount that people are encouraged to take care of it themselves. But maybe some of those costs could cover some of the cost of a third party doing some of that work for us. But yeah, it can, it can be pretty time-consuming. And of course, it's kind of a time-sensitive topic. And just with other things that we played, it's probably not done. And it could be done in a more timely manner if somebody else had us on their plate.
Tim?
Yeah, I guess I would be more in favor of a reactive approach, you know, response to complaint rather than proactively out there measuring somebody's grass. But would that also then potentially include clearing snow and ice off sidewalks in the wintertime?
Yep, it could include that as well.
Because that probably bothers me more than somebody not cutting their grass. It's more of a hazard then. And the idea of outsourcing, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Amanda and Lynn?
Where's this, Peggy? Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna comment on that. I think that your expertise is much more, better utilized for things that are more growth-focused and getting developers here and helping them navigate those processes. I really think that we should try and free up your time to do that kind of work than chasing down people to mow their yard. So I'd be way in favor of, I think the return on that could be twofold by getting someone else to do some of that work off your plate.
Amanda?
Okay. I concur with Lynn and Tim on that. I think that's good. There are some things on the list that made me think, what? We can't do that. And, and I don't know how to, I feel like there's other options we could explore. I'll put it like that. I'm really grateful for the memo, though, because putting everything on the table is important for us to know that all of these things exist and, and there are options. But I'm very reluctant to cut the Village Board outreach program. I feel like it's just kind of gaining momentum. I think people are just getting used to seeing a village table at events. And, you know, we've increased engagement by doing that little trivia game, you know, and having people learn about the village, the size of it. People are very surprised to know the square miles and the, and the populations and things like that that they, they don't think about a lot. And it kind of gets them more invested. I think we've gotten out the word about village activities. I just see so many benefits of this and it's, it's growing. And so, but I understand that, you know, the toll it takes on, on staff time. Maybe we can look at other ways to do that. Same thing with the committees. I don't know that how, I don't see committees that kind of go together very easily, but I think they're important and they do important work. And so I'd rather try to figure out ways that the chairs of these committees or secretaries of these committees can make the clerk's life easier. You know, we can, and we can put into effect in our ordinances, we can say, hey, we're not gonna have our clerk notice any meetings two weeks before an election. Or, or whatever, whatever candy needs to, to make things happen and to not feel that type of pressure. Or maybe they all have to be ready five or seven days before the meeting so that it's not such a crazy last-minute time crunch, right? I'm happy to explore those types of things, to free up staff time, maybe. I don't know. I just, I don't know, I don't like the idea of combining committees because there just doesn't seem to be a good way to do it. I want to keep the Village Board thing. I like, I think Oregon Carers does great work, you know? So stopping their, the grant assistance that we give them as a pass-through organization. Maybe they could have some of the grant money go towards administering the grant and pay us for that. Or if it's a time thing, you know, we might be growing to a point where we need like a part-time grants administrator because there's a transportation grant too, and we get all kinds of other grants that are ongoing. Maybe we should be looking at that and having the grants pay for that person's time. And that would free up staff time. I just see different areas where we could make it work without just flat-out cutting things that I think are important, like youth center. I don't want to cut youth center funding. That's, they depend on that. And it's a great program. My son went to the youth center and it's a great place for kids in that middle age range to go. We have no place else for them to go in this town. I'm sorry, but we don't. And that keeps them occupied in a safe environment while parents work. I mean, it's, it's an incredibly important program. It's by the police station. It helps foster that relationship with our local police. They play basketball. I mean, I, there are things that I am willing to cut, but the list here, some of those things really gave me pause. So I'm open to cutting. I just want to explore ways that we could improve efficiency first. So I'm not ready to make a decision on any of this. I just wanted to throw that all out there.
Who's next?
I could also ask about the development opportunity, the possibility of adding a staff for that. Can we talk about that a little bit?
Oh, sure. Yeah, so I had a, this is under the additional considerations under, in the memo. Wasn't, I guess, part of the actual list of formal recommendations. But, you know, we talk about economic development. Obviously, economic development is an important piece of long-range revenue strategy from a new construction value. And then also diversifying our, our tax base away from just predominantly residential. Obviously, when you can add commercial and industrial and manufacturing property base, you create a lot, tend to create a lot of value in smaller space. And it tends to demand less services than residents do. So you can add that on. Obviously, that's a good long-term strategy for your operations and your funding and your, your financial position. But my, my point in the memo is, you know, we effectively have a one-person planning, zoning, economic development department who is inundated with grass mowing complaints. So her ability to, again, to I think Lynn's point, go out there and network and be part of conversations for economic development and talk to property owners and be proactive in that world is extremely limited. So in effect, our economic... owners and be proactive in that world is extremely limited. So in effect, our economic development program is sort of, we get what we pay for, and that's the resources that we've put into it. And so if we want to be more aggressive in that area, then we need to invest more resources into it. And that is usually additional staff because you need expertise and you need bodies and you need people to be able to be doing those things. So, but again, that's a balance of, we have existing operations that obviously have critical needs, so we need to put funding towards that. And so if we need to balance all of those things, and if there's a desire to want to invest more in economic development, it's going to be, need to be done at the expense of something operationally somewhere else.
Yeah, I think I would be in support of that if we could find a way to do it.
Okay. I have a few comments. As far as the village outreach effort, I think it's a great effort. I think I'd love to see it reach more people. And a lot of times, you just have to kind of weigh people into the booth like a cell phone salesperson. But I think it's effective. That being said, I am concerned about a point that Martin made, and that is, and if you don't mind, I'll read it. Use of village staff in assisting and organizing and promoting youth events could create appearance of using public resources to support the visibility of incumbent officials. And I do think that potentially has merit. At a minimum, I'd like the village attorney to weigh in on that. It's one of those things where you may not be aware of it, but once someone makes you aware of it, you really need to get a legal opinion. Otherwise, you're setting yourself up later for, well, what about, kind of thing. As far as committees are concerned, I see the committees as advisory to the village board. If you look at the planning commission, the parks board, the sustainability committee, we frequently get recommendations from those committees. There are other committees where we don't really hear anything for extended periods of time. That makes me wonder if they're meeting their charge of being advisory to the village board. And if they're not, then I think we want to consider eliminating those committees. I have more, unless someone has. Keep going. Paige, I would direct you to page 14 of Martin's memo, and that would be page 146 of the pack. We've had some discussion about adding someone to community development, adding another staff person. If we look at our operational budget, virtually, everything is a cost. If we could add someone to community development to work with the lease, that would be, in my mind, an investment. And it would be a rare chance for us to make an investment, in my opinion. And for that, and of course, like anything else, how are we going to pay for that? And I think the answer is potentially late, is on this page, page 14. And that is that we could eliminate village board pay or consider reducing that. We could reduce the youth center funding by 50%, reduce OCA media funding by 50%. Consider the cost and potentially end support for some community events, perhaps all, public arts also, and also end a relationship with Oregon Cares. Now, if you quick do the math on that, that just about will, I think, pay for that position to come very close. As I said on the outside of this process, we're going to have to say no to some things. This is an opportunity to say something that I think would be very positive. I welcome your comments. Lynn?
I appreciate those comments. A couple of quick things. I'm going to try and stay as far away from the village outreach program discussion as I possibly can because we all know that I'm not going to be objective about it. But I do want to address some of the concerns. And I'm going to say I, but I want to say, as the village outreach coordinator, I have worked very hard to try and keep that apolitical. We do not, we have a line in our structure that we are not to campaign. Anything on the village outreach table is village services, outdoor movie night, green box. There will be nothing that is political. It is all informational. And as long as I am coordinator, that will be the priority. I would never want to put village staff at risk. And I think that it is an important, I agree with you, Phil, that I think it's an important continuation that we should keep assessing it, making sure that it is apolitical. But I really do believe that it is a tool for us to get information to the public about what our village does. It is not to provide an incumbent with any advantage. And in fact, all of our events are signup-based. If you don't want to come or sit at the village outreach table ever, you do not have to. If you want to sit at all of them, you could do that. That'd be great. It is an important outreach tool, not a campaign tool. And I do agree that if it ever became that, I do think it would need to be evaluated. I would also say that I work very hard as the coordinator to try and streamline this process for Candy. I have everything ready to go. If there is anything I could ever do to make it more efficient, please let me know. I can't notice things. I'm not a clerk. Bummer. But if there's a way that you need those done that would be faster, let me know. I do not want it to become a burden to the staff. I don't think any of us would want it to become a burden to the staff. And at the end of the day, if the board didn't feel like it was, like, useful, I'm okay to let it go. It's not my, I feel like sometimes people are like, that's Lynn's program. It's an idea that I had. At the end of the day, if it's not something that we want to continue, but I do want to make sure that it is apolitical and that it, in essence, it has been, in my opinion, although I'm not a legal expert. I have a question, though, about some of these adjustments. When I look at this list, I see it affecting a very select group of people, the people who use OCA media, the people who use the youth center, the people who get paid for the board, right? It's a very small group of people. Is there a reduction of a service that is more broad-ranging, that is sort of a bigger fish to catch in saving money? I don't want to necessarily reduce services to a small group of people who interact with us quite a bit, right? Who rely on us? I don't want to say rely. I want to say who have investment in the village board. We are a large village. Is there something out there that we're, that we could consider? Or is that really like a pipe dream?
The only other things to consider are, I guess, well, again, it's subjective, but, you know, core government services, right? I mean, that's all, that's all that's left. So it's administration, it's clerk, it's finance, it's community development, senior center, library, public safety, police, fire protection, EMS. And that's it. That's all we do. So, you know, these ones that are listed here, these are two services, like youth center and OCA, that are kind of the only independent things that we provide services to from a dollar, on a dollar basis like that. So if we're talking about other things, then we're talking about services that we provide as a government. So, you know, that could be, you know, again, on the list for ideas for futures or for further study potentially. You know, do we want to change work schedules? Do we want to change employee benefits? Do we want to reduce the number of employees and staff? Do we want to close buildings? It's those types of things that we're going to have to have conversations about then.
Can I ask just a silly question? Brush pickup. How much does brush pickup cost us?
Offhand, I'm not sure. And that's, you know, to my point about the public works of actually establishing, what are all of our programs? Let's understand what our base level, what is our service delivery right now for all of our programs? And then let's adjust once we know. And what's the impact of that going to be? Because, and again, I mean, you guys can make any decision you want, but, you know, from my perspective, it's, we don't want to just say, let's cut the service right now in public works. Well, we don't know. What do we know about this service? What does the board know about this service? What do we evaluate about this service? Do we know what it all does? Does every board member know what brush pickup is involved, you know, when we talk about that service? And so I guess to my point on public works and the police is, let's understand that before we start saying, let's have those conversations, let's get the information, let's get the data. And then, you know, to my point on the police one, it's, you know, this is something we can take and perhaps go to referendum with. Now, it's not just us saying, it's not the police chief just saying, it's not administration just saying, it's not the board just saying, hey, we need some things here. Now, we have a second set of eyes that says, no, what they're saying is correct, and this is what's needed.
Great. And for the record, I'm not proposing getting rid of brush pickup, just so that everyone's aware. Just an idea, like a service, a concrete idea there.
I would remain in favor of having the village attorney weigh in on the village outreach program. And I'll hold my comments. I think Amanda and then...
I would support you on that. I think that the attorney should weigh in. And just a suggestion, there may be a way that we can avoid the appearance of impropriety by not doing village outreach from December 1 until after the election. Bang. We don't do it during that time, and that's when people are actually candidates. The rest of the time, we are board members. That might solve it. It's winter. There's hardly anything going on anyway. And if we just said, look, we won't do it while there are actual candidates declared for office, maybe that would do it, right? Like, I'm just saying, there's room that we could explore it without saying, you know, we need to end the program. But absolutely, let's talk to the attorney. I support you on that. You know, I, all I'm going to say is, you know, there's a lot of organizations on here that offer, that, excuse me, that operate on razor-thin margins, you know. Oregon Cares, they don't have a lot of money. It's all grants, basically. The youth center, their whole budget is probably $60,000, maybe $100,000 tops. So $17,000 cut is not nothing to them. I mean, that's a significant chunk of their budget. If we stop funding OCA media tomorrow or even next year, it would fold. It'd be done. It would close. Because that money is that vital. And we're talking about $130,000, $100,000, whatever it is in here. It's not a ton of money, but it's the only thing keeping it afloat. We, I'm on the OCA media board, and we have been trying to go to, towards a PBS model of, you know, fundraising from the public because we know that funding isn't going to be forever. We've been trying to do this. And you know how well it's worked? Not very. You cut that funding, it's done. So, you know, like, there are things that, like, if we make these decisions, you can't go back. And I am really reluctant to cut those things that are so vital, so much a part of our community. So I think I'd just like some more time to look at ways that we could cut without being so devastating to any of these organizations.
I would say a couple of comments. One is, Lynn mentioned that, you know, the funding I'm talking about is for a small group. And, and you, an idea that you suggested, I know you were not being specific, but brush pickup, that affects a very large group. If we're looking at our core services, we should be looking at large groups before we look at small groups. I don't believe that the village core services are funding OCA or the youth center or Oregon Cares. Who's next?
Yeah, I wanted to just offer on the village outreach program in general, I think it's worth taking a step back and reevaluating if it's meeting our goals. I, you know, since I've been on the board, crave substantive conversations with the electorate about the issues we're wrestling with, such as the budget tonight. I'd love to get more people engaged and understanding and having conversations about that. I would argue that the outreach program has not led to that. You know, I've had maybe one substantive conversation at all the different events I've done. And so while I support the idea, I'm not sure this is getting us there. And so if there's a way to shift it in a way that both gets us there and takes some burden off village staff, I'd be really open to that. So I'd just like to keep kind of talking about that and looking for ways to improve the program. I like the engagement that came from, you know, the trivia questions that got a lot of conversation started. But again, we didn't have really the opportunity to have substantive conversations with people because, I mean, in my opinion, the people who voted in the last election made a mistake when they turned down the referendum. And I think they made a mistake because I don't think they understood the issues. We came out ahead of the issue when they hadn't noticed the pain and said, there's pain coming, and we need to fund it now. And so I just had somebody recently complaining about the lack of traffic enforcement. I'm like, gee, I really wish we could have afforded those three police officers we asked for in the referendum. And that, I think the chief said, is the number one complaint the police department hears, is a lack of traffic enforcement. And that's directly related to a lack of staffing in the police department that would have been rectified by the referendum. And similar to other areas where things are not funded in a way that they can continue the way they've been going, and people need to understand that that's the choice they're making. And I'm not sure everybody who voted no for the referendum understood that that was the choice they were making, fully and informed. And I'd love opportunities to have more of those conversations with people. I also think, you know, a lot of the ideas that are coming out continue to sort of push against things. I understand some of them are going to be pretty tough to implement. You know, the youth center, I'd have a hard time defending that we cut the youth center. Because I think the folks who need that are probably more the people that need support in our community. But, you know, one example I saw in some of the notes here was that the public art committee puts a significant burden on the parks, the Department of Public Works in terms of labor to put sculptures out at a time when they're already busy. Well, at a minimum, I think we could go back to the art group and say, maybe your timing of the art fair is wrong. And maybe we need to change the timing on putting these statues out there. Are there times when it's slower and they'd be more able to help? And so I would continue to support all of those small things that we're going at that take a lot of pressure off staff. But I feel like I'm getting a little long-winded, so I'll stop there.
Who's next? Lynn?
I'm sorry. I, so thank you, Tim. I appreciate your thoughts. Two quick rebuttals to that. First of all, the outreach program can be whatever we want it to be. At the beginning of every quarter, I stand here and I say to you all, if you have ideas, come to me. In fact, the one we have coming up later in this agenda came to me from Paige. So I don't want it to seem like, well, Lynn's not planning something that I can engage with somebody. This is not about Lynn. This is the village board outreach. If you have an idea, if you think there's a better way. But then my also second piece on that is, if we're having conversations about the budget and I'm trying to convince somebody in a specific way, then I am worried that we are getting to a place where we are being political. Those conversations I have with residents, but I have them as a trustee, not at the village board table. Because my opinion on how our budget looks could be very different than the other six of you. So I think we have to think a little bit about, and maybe this is a great point, that we need to think about strategizing what our goal is for the public outreach program. Maybe that's where we need to focus. But I just want to preface by saying, like, if there is ideas, bring them to me. And then we'll weigh them about how political they are or how informational they are. I think we can have budget information, for sure. I think we should. I think we can have budget information, for sure, I think we should. But, that's all I'll say.
Who's next? I knew if I waited longer.
Well, okay. Looking at the aggressive options that you referred to, Phil, I mean, first off, I got on the village board, I didn't know I was being paid. That was a surprise to me when they, when they paid and sent me a check. I was, like, okay, well, that's really nice. I didn't do this for that pay. If that's, if that makes or breaks something on this budget, that's fine with me. You know, I look at, at things like OCA, and I guess the difficulty I have there is, it's, it provides something that's unique in Oregon and there's communications to it. You know, we, we note that there are people who know more about things going on in Oregon than in a lot of other communities. And yet, we see this wide number of people who still don't know anything. So, do we, do we take away the one thing that's delivering communications? I will say that the funding method we have for OCA media, where it's coming from cable franchise fees and so forth, is a broken process. If that had continued in the same plane that it was conceived of in nineteen eighty-five, they'd, there'd be more money there now than necessary to fund it. It's a broken process. We need to find a new process to fund it and I would strongly support that. And it may be involving more partners and more organizations, but it would take more discussion than, but if you, if you cut it, I would say that, that would be the end of OCA. I mean, they're, they couldn't, they couldn't operate with, with a sixty, fifty percent cut. You would be, you might get village board meetings, you won't get any community concerts, that'd be about it. You'd have the village board meetings and the school board would have to pick up their school board meetings. And, and some communities have chosen to do that. And it's not been positive.
Again, I'm going to go back to our core activities. And I don't see anything beyond televising village board meetings as a core responsibility. I don't see it to be the core responsibility to support the youth center. Again, it's a, it's a small, very small group. It does not, has, overall in the village, it doesn't have a positive effect for village taxpayers. And I go back to my original point and that is, is that I'd like to make an investment rather than a cost. And that investment would be to add to our community development department so that we can go, we can, uh, look for opportunities for grants and commercial development. And I think we've all heard that from citizens saying, we need more commercial development. I think we're all aware of it. This is a step towards making that happen. There are going to be some things we're going to have to cut and there's going to be some people that are be unhappy. But I'm not hearing any suggestions tonight about where, where we, else we might cut. In fact, I'm not hearing suggestions to where cutting anything. And, uh, that's just not where I am. Amanda?
Well, the, the, the one area that I'll push back on that is I'd say, well, a senior center isn't part of our core responsibilities either. So, why are we building a senior center? Now, I'm not suggesting that we stop building the senior center. But, but I, I don't know that, that that's, you're right, you're, you're absolutely right when you say that those are not core services. I'm, I'm not arguing that point. I just feel like there are some things that, that municipalities do for their citizens. Because if they didn't, it wouldn't happen. Can we cut some of what we give the youth center? Maybe, I'll talk about that. What if we gave them less? What if we halved it, like, eight thousand five hundred dollars? That, that is a reasonable amount that maybe they could privately fundraise, right? They could maybe make that up on their own and be okay, you know, or, or something like that. Uh, OCA media, shave a little, I hate to say that. I know Tom and I have been at a lot of board meetings and it, it kills me to say these things. But taking a little back from that, we could do that, you know? Take ten thousand back from there, you know, and do, like, pieces. Because it gives those organizations a chance to still survive. I, I really am concerned about taking, like, all of what we give. Like, the youth center, maybe if we took it all, they could survive. That's a lot to privately fundraise in this community in a time when everybody's hurting, right? But, you know, OCA media, if you, if you took it all, or if you took half, like Tom said, it's gone. And the thing is, we can't go back in two years and say, okay, we're ready to fund you. That equipment's gone, it's sold, the space is gone. Like, that whole thing, you'd have to start from scratch and it would cost more. We don't want these to disappear. If we want to take some back because we need to, that's one thing. But taking, taking so much that you are going to permanently get rid of these important organizations, that's where I draw the line. I just, I can't make that deep of a cut because to put it back would be so difficult. And, and I just, it's too permanent, that's my problem.
I guess I'd like to just get a, you know, a sense, we're really not, you know, could I do motions these, or if I could just get nodding heads?
You can do motions if you want, or nodding heads. I guess, I guess really what, what I'm looking for is, you know, I have the list of, of recommended things, which is predominantly the compensation thing.
I would come to that. I wanted to address these specific things that I brought up.
Yeah, maybe if you want motions or.
Well, let's just see if there's a sense here. First of all, reduce village pay, pay by fifty percent. Yes, no?
Village board pay?
Yes, I'm sorry. But what did I say? Yeah, get that right in the minutes. Yes, village board compensation by fifty percent. Yes, no?
I would, I would vote for that.
So, generally agreement? Yes, okay.
Can I just say something on that before we move on real fast?
Sure.
I'm unemployed right now. It's the only income I'm getting. But I would support a fifty percent cut. And that hurts me personally.
Can I also add as a new board member? I lose money. Like, I buy food for the committee meetings, the gas I drive, the thing, like, I lose money. I'm not even make, like, just to be clear.
Let me make this suggestion. Those that could opt to, to, could defer their village board salary, how's that? Is that going to be a nightmare or?
Believe it or not, there's actually a statutory process you have to take to forego your salary. I, I don't think it's overly burdensome, but I guess the, the challenge there is, you know, let's say this whole board decides to defer, right? And then we start getting new mo- board members and they decide not to. And then we're just in a cycle where we can't really rely on that money.
I withdraw that idea. Reduce Oregon Youth Center funding by fifty percent. Anyone? Yes, no?
I'm open to it.
It seems too much, but I'd have to know what the impact would be. We're, we're making a cut, we don't even know what the impact is.
Yes, I, I would agree with that. I'd like to hear from the youth center and see.
Fair enough. And, and let me just offer this. So, um, we pulled our first version of the operating budget draft together last week. And it's usually a very rough draft when it's the first draft. But we have in there right now the wage recommendation that's in this, in this recommendation. We have the parks crew person position in there. We have the youth services library assistant position in there. We don't have the HR manager position in there. We have the non-union sworn wage increases, the municipal clerk, clerk wage adjustment. And then funding to cover the county budget shortfall for the senior center. And I think that's we, all we have fit in there for sort of new things. And we're about a hundred and fifty to two hundred in deficit. So, now that doesn't scare me too much because we've seen much worse in the first rough put together. And just kind of doing some back of the napkin math on a couple of things. I think we can maybe reasonably close that and keep everything in there. But I don't foresee anything else being able to be put in. So, that would probably be the extent of what we'd be able to do for these recommendations.
I'm not really clear on what you just said, Martin. Are you saying that it's not, it's not advisable to, to, to consider these reductions?
I, I would say if you are thinking about them, let's see what the first draft of the budget looks like when it comes in the first meeting of October. Maybe it looks better than we think, once we have about a month here to kind of play around with it. But at least then you're reacting to something that is in front of you. And if it, if it looks the way it looks, you know, then you have maybe some tangible trade-offs of, well, we could maybe not add this position in and trade it off for the economic development position. Or we could do some of these things that are being suggested. And now we do have enough to add in the economic development position or the HR manager position. I guess right now, it's, you know, let's just say you said eliminate OCA media, all of the funding or something like that. Well, we come to you with a budget in the first meeting of October and maybe we've done some good work here and we've balanced out, everything out. And then we're going to have to revisit that conversation, I guess. I guess order of operations. I, I'm, I'm more or less looking for, are we sort of on the right track with the initial recommendations? And then, based on what that looks like, we can decide level of aggressiveness for the board in terms of some sort of competing priorities that we're sort of hearing right now.
Can I ask a quick question? Can I ask you a question about the human resources manager position? Do municipalities contract out roles such as that? Meaning, we don't pay their ben- like, we pay an organization to give us an HR manager?
Yeah, it's possible.
I'd, I'd be interested to see what the difference of that looks like, kind of a cost analysis. But also just a, for you as the administrator, what are the pros and cons to that? It's a role that I really think we need, but I wonder if there is a way that we could be creative maybe in staffing that, that would reduce a bit of burden on our budget?
All right, uh, I'm going to go to page sixteen of Martin's memo. I'm sorry that I don't have the packet number, but it's the recommendations for, uh, that Mark is making in, in this quick list. So, we'll just go through those real quick. Uh, under compensation, uh, we have implement to rewards consulting refresh sixteen step wage schedule per resolution twenty-five dash twenty. Place each employee at the nearest step not below the current wage and guarantee at least a one point seven five increase higher if step exceeds that. Everyone good? Moving on. Uh, new staffing priority order, parks crew person, youth services library assistant and human sources, human resources manager in that order. All good? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So, when we were looking at the, the, you know, the red areas that, you know, that chart that, you know, had the, the pain points, right, for each one? I mean, the, the, we had police, clerk's office and library is the top three most pinched. The parks crew person, I know that's a leftover from before, but then we have library and human resources. But, um, is that the, the spilling on to the next one for the police? Is it just raising the, the amount? Or do we need a new, like, staff? Are we adding staff to the police also? Because if that, if it's, okay.
No, no.
Is it because we have unfilled positions? Is that what I'm understanding?
So, it's, I guess a combination of a couple of things. One is, you know, obviously we ask departments directly what the, the highest priority is, if they can get one thing in this budget. Chief's request was, the priority is really getting some higher wages to her, their non-union sworn staff because that's where her experience is. And if she loses people there, it's really going to hurt downstream. And then, you know, on top of that, like you just hit it, it, we have some of these open positions, we've had open positions. If we're going to add positions, we're going to have these vacancies where we're tying up a bunch of budget money in these vacancies. We're almost there. I think potentially if, if we don't have a lot of turnover next year, we may have all of our police positions filled. And I think that sets us up for a twenty-seven budget where we're trying to probably add some additional police staffing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is targeted retention. Police non-union, place above market median to retain people, municipal clerk clerk or justice median to ensure continuity in public works street lead. All good? Operational sustainability, backfill senior center, county shortfall of five thousand dollars, begin phase N higher operating costs for the senior center and explore outsourcing property maintenance code enforcement. Efficiency review, not reduce non-mandated committees to cut clerks department workload and village board outreach program, member-led outreach with support staff. That's clearly, uh.
I would, I would say we'd want to look to see how we could reduce the clerk's workload in relationship to those committees. There was a mention in there of simply doing the motion resolution kind of minutes. That would certainly reduce the workload an awful lot for a lot of those committees. And, and in most of them, that would be more than adequate. Simply, here's the motion, here's the, here's the actions that was taken. And it would, it wouldn't necessarily reduce the committees, but there may be a better committee structure and I'm more than willing to talk about that, too.
Okay. And as far as the village board outreach form, I guess, number one, we want to get a village attorney's opinion before we, I think we make any decisions, right?
Yeah, I would also say that I think member-led outreach, we would still need staffs, you would still have to notice.
Yes, right.
So, I, I think there would be, I, I don't necessarily know how doing member-led outreach would reduce a bunch of support staff. But if that is out there, happy to hear those suggestions.
Okay, uh, cost recovery and revenue, adopt the updated billing permit fee schedule and pursue a formal cost sharing or partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. All good, long-term studies, police, professional third-party operational staffing study and public works defined document programs and board approved base service levels to policies. Anyone? Capital priority, keep the senior center on track for twenty-twenty-six construction. Other discussion on this agenda item.
We're just getting consensus, right? We're not like voting on anything.
You're not, you're not to be held to anything we, we said, yeah. Okay, so, nothing further on that? Okay, uh, let's see. Everything, you're good, Mark?
I'm good, yep.
AD, proposal for senior center facility project fundraising consultant, request for proposals. Staff recommendation, motion authorized staff to prepare draft, request for proposals. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Rachel.
Well, I think this is pretty well outlined in the memo. But as you may recall, last May, you approved an ordinance or adopted an ordinance that created a fundraising committee. And Phil, as president of the, of the board, was tasked with filling those positions. And as we started to really delve into who should be on that committee, how is that committee going to function? What is the purpose? How, you know, it became clear that we didn't really know enough yet ourselves. So, we started doing some research to figure out how do fundraising committees really work. And we came to the conclusion that we were probably putting the horse before the cart. And we came to the conclusion that we were probably putting the horse before the cart. Backwards, the cart before the horse. We do wanna put the horse before the cart. But because we didn't know enough to create the committee, we need some guidance on that, and it turns out that really best practice is to have somebody help you form your committee, because committees need a, a lot of different skills. They need somebody with financial skills. They need somebody with public speaking skills. They need somebody who's well-connected in the community. They need people who are well-regarded by, you know, there's just a whole host of things. And that sometimes the outside fundraiser can see people in ways that we don't, because we, you know, they're our buddies, or they're our long-term people in our community that we don't see as, oh, yeah, they have that skill set. But then there, there were a lot of other issues as well that we encountered along the way. And I've tried to list a bunch of them in this memo, and we'd be happy to talk about them. But a fundraiser will, a consultant to help with fundraising would, um, help us set a realistic goal for what we might try to pursue in the community, how to go about that. It's not necessarily a project that has to raise a certain amount of money in order to happen. So how do you motivate people to give if they don't feel as though their gift is gonna make the difference? How do you recognize donors? How do you give them the incentive they need to, to provide those funds if it's not a make or break situation? Just, there's just a whole host of issues, as well as if we're gonna try and reduce the tax burden as much as possible on the community, I think the community should be reassured that we've done everything we can do. We've given the volunteers the training that they may need to go out and ask people to make contributions. That's an awkward feeling for a lot of people, and it's helpful to have that kind of training. So we've sort of come to the conclusion that instead of creating a committee, first, we may need to look at hiring a consultant first. Phil, have you, anything to add there?
Yes. Um, first of all, and I'm sure Rachel would agree, is, uh, that we met with Jennifer, and in thirty minutes, she told us, an hour and a half, gave us about an hour and a half's worth of useful information. So it was very worthwhile. She clearly has done this, warned us about pitfalls, what to watch for, how to evaluate, uh, people that apply, et cetera, et cetera. So you're, Jennifer, her, her input was invaluable. But, uh, most importantly, I think we got out of that is that this is a good idea to hire a consultant. I know it's another cost, but, um, unless we had someone like Jennifer to hold our hand, we're gonna need someone else to help us out. So that's why I'm recommending we approve this. Amanda.
Seeing the, the library building process, uh, and watching, I wasn't on the fundraising committee, but I remember talking to the fundraising coordinator and seeing the value that, that he brought to that process. I think this is a great idea. It more than pays for itself. Like, I think the donations that would come in, the bigger ones, because of hiring this person, would make it worth our while to do. So, yes.
Okay, additional comments? Okay, we have a motion by the chair, second by Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Posed, motion carries, thank you. Item nine, new business under for discussion and/or possible action. A proposal for village board outreach program fall schedule and trunk or treat event to be held Saturday, October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five at two to four P M. Amanda.
I just had a question. Did we coordinate the time with other locals? Yes, I see the nod. Excellent. Then, great idea. Love this.
Is that a motion?
Yes, motion. I'll be, I'll motion.
All right. Second by Paige. I wonder if we should make this conditional upon the attorney's opinion?
Uh, we absolutely can.
I would add that as an amendment.
Okay.
I need, I, I need a second. Thank you. Further discussion? Uh, Paige.
So there is a question for you all in this. So I don't know, Phil, if we wanna wait to have this discussion until after we get a village attorney assessment. In this fall schedule, there are two events. That's pretty straightforward. We've done them before. Trunk or treat was a huge hit last year. But the second piece is what Paige had brought, Paige, and I think, Tim, you might have brought this to me a couple of months ago as well, about doing a more of a social media focus and, um, some short videos. Now, we're not gonna get close to Officer Coulson, who's, by the way, doing an amazing job with the police department. But, um, kind of a way for people to see inside, um, the village a bit. However, what I am not sure is what, or who, we should interview.
Uh, I think we're getting a little bit far off.
Okay, sorry.
That's here. Uh, is what you're describing, uh, part of what we're proposing approving tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm concerned about staff time on that.
Yes, I, okay.
On the proposal for the interviews on social media, I, I, to me, that looks like staff time investment. So I am concerned about that. So, um, but I'm more concerned, because I think I know what the attorney's opinion is going to be, that we don't do anything until, you know, again, like I said, subject to his decision. Now, ideally, maybe we can get that on the sixteenth meeting. Is that before the, the first event on your schedule here?
No.
No, I mean, is the first event you're describing gonna happen before the sixteenth?
The two events will happen in October.
Okay.
So that will be perfectly fine, and we can bump the social media, I mean, it can be whenever, so happy to adjust.
Okay, um, well, um, I am concerned about the social media thing and staff time involved. So, um, if that's part of this, then I, I, I'm not in favor, unless you wanna have a large discussion about it. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have two motions right now.
Yeah.
Well, the motion that's on the floor right now is the amendment to run the village.
I'm ahead of that.
Okay.
Yep. But thank you for, thank you for telling me that.
So, just to answer your question really quickly, I, I do, I also agree, that I think, I'm nervous about what this would take for staff. Now, first of all, I think that the actual, like, the video work and the publishing of that can be all on me. I just need the credentials in order to put them on said social media account, or somehow we can get that, right? It's the interviews, right, that would take
Right.
the most amount of time. And so, I don't know where I put it in here, but if there was a different topic that we wanted to do, I would be really open to that. I don't wanna do interviews of village board trustees, because again,
Right.
don't want it to be a portal for that.
Yeah.
So what I'm looking for from the, or what I was looking for from the board was sort of a discussion about what would we want this to be? And so I don't know if, like you said, are we getting ahead of, do, do we, should we make that determination and then give it to the attorney and say, okay, what do you think about this actual idea? Or are we having him look at the program and then assess what the fall looks like?
Those are questions for the attorney, in the sense that I don't know whether he would look at those separately or as all on one thing.
Sure.
But the, but my concerns lie in, one is getting the, the village attorney's opinion on the outreach program in general. But I also have concern about potential staff time involved in doing the social media. Amanda.
Okay. I, I just wanna clarify, when making the motion here, I was looking at the trunk or treat, because I figured that was a separate thing. I was not including the whole outreach thing. But if you want that, if we're, I would rather separate these. I feel like the trunk or treat is, although it's village outreach, I don't think anyone's gonna accuse us of campaigning. I mean, this is for little kids. They can't vote, right? I mean, I don't know, that, I feel like I thought we were, do these kind of separately. If, if we're, do, I mean, we can still get it.
Vote for me, I gave out the big candy box.
We don't even talk to each other. We're separated, like, car lengths apart, and it's like, whatever. Okay.
I think we should just get the legal opinion.
So, to me, the fall schedule is the two first dates.
Yeah.
Is that everyone's understanding?
Yes.
So you could approve those, right?
Yeah.
And you could approve the trunk or treat. That's kind of how I have the motion, how I understood it, but maybe I misunderstood.
Okay, so, um, it's.
And then I have an amendment to.
And the amendment is?
To get the overall legal opinion.
Right, okay, all right. All right, well, let's vote on the amendment and get that out of the way. So, uh, everyone understand that? Just to get a legal opinion?
I don't understand the amendment.
Okay, the amendment is, 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 our approval is conditional upon the village attorney saying that we are okay to continue to hold these events. All right? That's good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, okay. So that motion is fa, uh, passed. I mean, the amendment has passed. We still have the main motion, and, and it sounds like there, that we may wanna segregate these, and that, and that we have the October events that we would, could approve, and, and perhaps have further discussion and, and maybe have, uh, uh, discussion with staff to see if there's gonna be an impact on staff time to do the social media thing. All right, so now we need to alter the main motion.
So that's actually not how I understood it. I understood it to.
No, I think it's evolved into that.
To approve the village board public outreach fall schedule, which is the two first dates.
Yes.
And the trunk or treat.
That's it.
Yep, that's all I have.
Okay, let's vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Now, that leaves the, uh, social media campaign. You wanna add that to a future agenda? When you get there?
We absolutely can. A social media-focused, not a campaign. We will not campaign.
Yeah, I withdraw that word. Are we all clear on that?
So that's being deferred till later discussion?
Yeah.
Until we get more information.
Yeah, yeah, and we could add it to a future agenda. Okay.
Okay.
All good on that? Okay, this is where we are. I gotta take a break.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so, number ten, uh, reports of village officers, department heads, and consultants. This is informational only. No action by the village board will be taken. The reports are in the packet. Does anybody have anything? Staff? Okay.
Well, it's village admin report.
Oh, veil admin, okay, first, that's right. If we do a admin report, that's in the packet. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, uh, B is the police chief report. Notice of revisions to victim witness and weapons policies. Does anybody have any questions on that?
No questions.
Okay, uh, then C is finance director report. Building permits, impact fees, and connection fees collected for the month ending July twenty-twenty-five. Any questions there? Okay, uh, number eleven is announcements and miscellaneous business. Eleven A, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Village board members provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. So, um, eleven A one, village president, do we do that? That's part of this, right? Do I do the, I'm just looking at this, and there's other follow-up things. Do I allow for an open comment period under eleven A?
You certainly can, yep.
Does anybody have any announcements?
I had a question.
Okay.
Can I ask how Oak Street went first day of school?
We received no complaints.
We did.
But it's okay.
All right.
All right. Yeah.
Darn it.
We were so close. Okay, so eleven A one, uh, village president appointments and removals from village board standing committees. Tim Higgins was appointed to the Public Works Committee and to serve as chairperson. Uh, Tim Higgins was removed from Public Safety Committee, and the appointment of Rick Marks to the Finance and Personnel Committee and Public Safety Committee. Do we have to approve that with them?
No, it's just present.
Okay. There you go. Uh, and then eleven B is future agenda items. Who's got something?
I'd like to put, uh, social media focus discussion for the next meeting. I will provide, um, more details and check in maybe with you, Martin, to see, or you can provide a memo. I, we're just gonna put it on the agenda.
Uh, anybody else? Okay, hearing none, uh, then we are, uh, without objection, adjourned. Business is concluded.